Today is April 28th, it is 6:00 PM and I am Mayor Julia Johnson and I call this Sajewully City Council meeting to order. Will you all please stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty. Thank you everyone who stood. So let's move through roles. So I'll begin with Councilwoman Joelle and Kesty.
Present.
Councilwoman Sarah Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Chuck Owen.
Present.
Councilman Kevin Loy.
Here.
Councilman Glenn Allen.
Present.
Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Present.
And Councilman Brendan McGoffin.
Present.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so I'm looking for an approval of the agenda. Before we do, we have, if you saw the late materials, you saw that we have an additional late material for the final plat approval of the Samish Estates and this would just be on the consent agenda. So if there are no oppositions to this, I'm looking for an approval, including that plat on the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'd like to pull item number three on the consent agenda and discuss it.
Okay. We can do that. So let's, uh, why don't we start by approving the agenda? And we'll pull item three. Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'll second Councilman Allen.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Kesty, seconded by Councilman Allen to approve the agenda, which includes the final plat approval for the Samish Estates. With the caveat that we are pulling item three for discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, so before we move into the consent agenda, let's look at item three, the ordinance number nine, nineteen eighty-one twenty-one, the code amendment for the Sajewully Municipal Code, three point five six point zero one zero, and that is adding department head designees to official signer list. So Doug, do you want to take this? Or Kevin, did you want to first state your concerns?
Well, concern is I don't have a clue what it's about and I couldn't find any information about. And adding signatories is a scary thing.
Okay. Um. So Doug, do you want to take this?
You bet. I'll go with that one. So what this does is when I'm looking at our procedures we use for signing off on invoices that are being paid. In our city code, it says department heads will sign all invoices. There are sometimes, say in the bigger departments like Public Works where Nathan or one of the other division managers will sign those and send those to accounts payable. So what we're doing a little bit is putting in some wording that says, "or designate." So we don't swamp Mark or Lynn or Dean or them with a ton of invoices to be signing. They have some crew on their staff that can sign for those. The thing you need to do though is make sure that what's in your city code matches what you're actually doing in practice. So what we're doing is adding just a couple of words in there so that those designees can sign invoices. It requires them to sign an initial, a list that's kept in accounts payable and finance and only those people are allowed to actually sign invoices. So that's what we're setting up.
So is this where they're certifying that the work was done or the items, the items were delivered? Or is that what this is about?
That's exactly right.
So, so this is adding, who is this? How many people is this adding? And or is it, who is it?
It'd be four peoples about, I think. So you have, it'd be like Nathan, Leo, probably Kevin at the treatment plant. You might have an assistant fire chief or a police lieutenant that we would entrust then to sign some of those invoices like that. This isn't carte blanche for everybody in the city to go signing invoices and turning them in. And ultimately, the department head is still responsible for those things going into their budgets. So they'll be making sure as well and reviewing their reports to make sure everything looks kosher.
That's why I'm questioning it because I've been in my past life run into situations where stuff like that got out of hand.
Yeah, you have to know too, there are about three levels of review, even after those are initial. Trina will go through and make sure all invoice is coming in. She will verify the signatures on those against the list. And then Jill, when we go through the accounts payable runs, she goes through every single invoice and verifies those. And then it actually comes to me as well. I sign off on those. So there's actually three more of us that are reviewing those. And usually, for the most part, I know just about every one of those invoices and what's coming in, whether it's been here or not.
Well, that sounds like a pretty good explanation to me.
Doug, Councilman Allen, just a quick question. Everything is totally under a lot of scrutiny, however we do it, right?
Bet.
Any other questions for Doug? Okay, hearing none, then I am looking for an approval of the consent agenda, items one through five. Five, of course, being the final plat approval for the Samish Estates.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda one through five.
Good, Councilman Owen.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, that carries. Moving into staff reports, we'll begin tonight with Fire Chief Frank Wagner. Good evening, Frank.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Fire Department is still trying to start this whole transition without Chief Klinger. He's, I think, down to twelve official days before the big date. The rest of the crews around here have a committee together trying to put something together to to honor the forty years of service that he's done for the community and all of us and the amazing legacy that he has left behind. Other than that, we're still dealing with COVID and and everybody's kind of in limbo right now. And the word on the street or from public health is that we are over all the numbers currently where we won't be able to stay in phase three. And the anticipation of Monday or Tuesday, we're going to get a review back from Governor Inslee on where we're going to be. And right now, if it was done today, we would all be moving back to phase two, I think, as far as the entire state maybe. So that's not good news. Hopefully, something changes here for the county and some of the counties around us in the next few days to change that. But we will make do with what we can and try to make the best of it.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Chief.
Go ahead, Councilman DeYoung.
Thank you. Chief Wagner, I am wondering how we're doing on filling your old position there as Assistant Fire Chief.
We are currently in that process as we speak. We went before the Civil Service here a couple of months ago and got the processes approved. We have finished the written testing portion of that and the oral boards. We are now waiting for May sixth as our scheduled meeting with the Civil Service Committee to get that testing process certified. And then we'll hopefully have some candidates to make some job offers to going forward. And let me go back, that's actually for Chief Olson's position of training. We're going to try to fill that one first because obviously with Chief Klinger leaving, I can still manage a lot of the operations and EMS stuff that I've been doing. But Todd Olson, our Assistant Chief of Training, will be leaving us for retirement on June thirtieth. So we're going to try to fill that position first as far as our succession plan and get someone up and running in that and hopefully get some, a few weeks anyway with Chief Olson to kind of pass the torch and and draw from his experiences to get us moving in the right direction. And then we'll move on to the operations and EMS process as well to fill that position right thereafter, which is already also approved by Civil Service.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You betcha, sir.
All right, thank you. Lieutenant Dan McElwray.
Good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. So this is what we got going on here. So I'll just give you a little update on our drug takeback day. We collected thirty point four pounds of prescription medications. Those are out of people's houses and off the streets on Saturday, April twenty-fourth. So that's pretty good, a little bit down from last year, but that's still good. That just means we're educating all the locations where we can drop off. Also wanted to mention on May seventeenth, we are doing an in-house active shooter rescue task for training with the fire department. I just want to extend and invite the council, if you're interested in watching to see what we do in those scenarios, seven PM, just reach out to me via email or my cellphone or something. I can get ahold of you guys and let you guys in and see what we do. And basically what that is, is just working with the fire department. So if we have a scenario like that, we train every year on this. You know, trying to get the fire department to rescue people we can get to in what's called kind of a warm zone. So say we have an area where we know is safe. We're going to try to escort them in and get those people out, get them treatment they need. So just reach out to me if you're interested. And so, you know, we're still working on our Lexapro policies. It's going to be quite a process and we hope to have that done by the end of the year. Just a lot to go through and a lot of changes. So just going through all that. And then our two D detectives, they started in April. And man, they've just been really busy trying to keep up on things with school. Going into full swing, we're getting a lot of sex offenses, sex offense reports that are being delayed. So they've been pretty busy doing a lot of that. So hopefully that tones down a bit. But that's what we're doing over here. We did have a, I don't know if you guys heard, we had a motorcycle accident today. FNS grade in Clear Street. Not a pursuit or anything, just a motorcycle taking a corner too fast and that person was transported. That guy tried to run when police arrived, but he's being transported and we know why the motorcycle ended up being stolen. So that's what happened there.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Lieutenant.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for you. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for a great social media presence. It is just a wonderful way to interact with the community and it looks like the community just loves how you guys are interacting. I specifically appreciated the Buffalo post. Thank you.
Well, I'll give congrats to Sergeant Paul, the one in charge of all that. He's very creative on how he posts and is getting very good at that for sure.
Lieutenant, I have a question. This is Councilmember Diamond. Will there be or is there ways for the community to bring back prescription drugs that they may find in their cabinets throughout the year? Is that something that is done that the community is aware of?
Yes, it's advertised. We have one here. We have a drop-off box here. The police department, their Schaffner Pharmacy also has one. Pharmacy also has one. It just, you know, with difficulties of the lobby being closed, it makes it difficult for us to open it up. But those are our other options for sure. Once we get back into full swing, that's fine. We also have the opportunity to, you know, provide mailers. Actually, we have pre-postage page mailers that they can send those off to and it goes to the same spot and disposed of. So, yep, those are.
Wonderful. And then the other question I have is just in, you know, my general walks through town, living here in town, I've noticed hypodermic needles and other drug paraphernalia that has become more common on the street side with kids going back to school and people walking more. And I've been out and about a little bit more. I've noticed some of this. As community members, where can we refer people to have this stuff cleaned up? To call in that sorts of stuff to keep our streets safe and and the likelihood of any accidents being had with them found on the streets?
We have no problem responding to pick up needles if that's what happens. You see it on a path or something, we'll go and take care of it. Letting put a sharp container. You know, I hope there's not like a mass cleanup, but yeah, you will run into those from time to time. And some citizens will just pick it up and dispose themselves and.
Right. And that's what I've noticed in my general area. However, it's just become a little bit more prevalent in something that I've noticed. And it's, it is concerning to me as, you know, living here in this community. I just want to make sure that everybody remains safe and that people are aware of the communities, aware of what they can do should they, you know, stumble upon something like that.
Yep. Feel free to call us and we'll come and pick it up. It's not, doesn't take too much time to do that for us.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. If there are no more questions for the lieutenant. Okay, we will move on to the Director of Building and Permits, John Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much. So first I'll give you an update on the planning commission's work last week. They finished up proposal, proposed code changes for digital signs, including special regulations for the Central Business District. So that'll be at the next council meeting on your agenda for you to consider. They also began their work having a discussion on the Central Business District design standards. So kind of get them oriented on that issue and talked over many of the issues that the council was concerned about and got the planning commission headed in the right direction so they can start a full review of the existing design standards. And the next month or so, we'll start working on looking at other design standards from other cities and work towards updating our standards. In the planning department, we've been very busy. I've been working with Nikki on several possible code updates just to improve our code to make subdivisions easier in particular, or at least more understandable. And then, like I said, the building and planning department have been very busy with the approval of a couple of new plats. We've been getting several building permits and we're also been getting some more complex building permits and land use permits. So we're, we're doing what we can to keep up. But yeah, this is probably the busiest we've been in recent memory. And that's about all I have for the council this evening.
All right. Thank you, John. Moving on to the Director of Public Works, Mark Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The legislative session closed. Mayor may speak about this some more, but we understand that no transportation package was passed this session. As you probably know, they did tie a couple of the carbon type of bills that were passed to the transportation package. So there is some, some impetus for legislature to move ahead with the the new money transportation packages, either in special session or next year. So we continue to keep our fingers crossed, but it did not go forward this year. Or at least with this particular session. So on to what we've actually got going on now. The wastewater treatment plant electrical project is nearing completion. We did re-energize on full power with the new automatic transfer switches and breakers and the like that we put in yesterday. And that all went pretty smoothly and we're operating back on regular utility power and our own backup system. Contractors should finish with all their work probably by the end of next week on that. So it'd be good to have that one closed out behind us. BNSF project that you authorized the last session. They are planning to mobilize and start their pile driving on May first. PSC was out this week putting a guy in and preparing their lines to de-energize. I didn't make it out there today, but I'm assuming that went forward. David Lee is working on the Wicker Road overlay project and we'll have that out to bid on May thirteenth. And I'm in the process of analyzing the engineers' estimates we've received back on the wastewater treatment plant laboratory operations building and the Public Works building. The estimates we received for the Public Works building were well within the numbers we were expecting and that I presented to you a few sessions ago when you authorized us to move forward with that. The estimate on the Lab Ops building is quite a bit higher than we had budgeted on that. So I'm analyzing that now. It's a pretty necessary improvement, so I'm going to have to figure out how to shift some things around and make that happen. Information coming to you hopefully at the next session on that particular project. Of course, the material price swings that we've been seeing recently have affected that. And a part of the higher estimates are due to the fact that the engineers or the estimators are putting in a fifteen percent kicker for COVID-nineteen effects on top of already large contingencies. So it really makes the numbers balloon up quickly, but I understand their caution on that. Also in design, our Highway Twenty and Township Intersection Improvement Project, I think I've said in some past sessions, we did delay the bid until October of this year because of known material acquisition issues related to COVID. And what we're planning to do is award that this year so they can order the long lead time signal poles and signal controllers for construction in the summer of 2022. Olmstead Park, Nathan and I and John have met with Skagit Trail Builders out there and also with the environmental folks. And they're going to start working on the loop trail around Thompson Pond this weekend. They're going to complete the one they had been working on on the port side of Thompson Drive or Northern States Drive that goes up to the secondary access road. That's walkable now. So if you haven't been out that way, it's, they're pretty cool what they've got done out there. And now they're going to work on our pond and we're grateful for that. They've got some good plans and we're fully on board with that. Nathan's trying to keep up with them. So that's a good thing. And I do have another grant to submit on May the fourteenth. It's under the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program that schedule, Skagit Council of Governments controls or offers. And I haven't decided a hundred percent on which one we're going to apply for yet. I do plan to speak with the Transportation Improvement Board in the next few days and see what best fits the programs. One option is to apply again for the same one we did with the Skagit County Economic Development Funds that would federalize that project, however. And I want to be careful about that if Tib is feeling like they might be able to fund that. It's better to keep it on local funds if we can. I will report out at the first council meeting in May. What's the choice on that and have you ratified the match requirements for that? So that'll be coming down the pipe at your next meeting. And finally, Nathan's, you've probably seen, if you've been driving around town, that his crew is preparing for our maintenance projects on the streets. They're out, going to be out on FNS grade road tomorrow. In fact, they've got a closure scheduled to do some shoulder grading and those kinds of things. And they're doing various other places around town, getting ready for our crack seals and slurry seals and chip seals and overlays that we're planning for this summer. So that's all for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
Well, as you saw on the agenda tonight, we've selected Sims for the cemetery software. And just want to thank the council for approving that. And Glenn Gardner, Christine Salsana and Julie Rosario for all the work that they did on this to make it happen. The Avidex Phase Two Point One of the council chambers is complete, so the audio is now upgraded. And we are going to want, add one other component that we can do ourselves. We're going to replace the wireless mics in there too with a much better system. And still looking at Springbrook Asset Management Software and the NeoGov payroll HR software. Just completed a big round of public surplus vehicles for Leo and it looks like he's got a lot more in the pipeline for me to work on. So staying busy. And the new issue of City Scene Magazine is out and it looks really good. Some great articles in there. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Bill. And I did send that attachment, the link to the City Scene Magazine out to all of you. So you should have it on your iPads in case you want to check the magazine out. Now, just as a reminder, we didn't go with the hard copies. Phillips Publishing went out of business and the cost of moving it to another publishing agency was quite extensive, quite costly. So working with both Bill and Jenna Hansen, we came up with this option to put it online. And Bill, I have to say, I love the flip book. It's fantastic. It is like reading a magazine. It's very nice. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Financial Manager Jill Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. We are preparing our audit schedules for the 2020 financial audit and financial report. So the financial statements are due to the state auditor at the end of May. We don't have a firm date set with the state auditors yet at this time, but we'll most likely expect them to be coming in the fall. We are also monitoring the American Rescue Plan funds that will be coming from the federal level. And Finance has updated its federal grant recipient information so that the process will be seamless when those funds are made available. Initial estimate of possible funds is $2.6 million and programs for cities under fifty thousand in population will be managed by the Washington State Department of Commerce, which was the agency that handled the prior CARES funds. And other than that, we've also been meeting, as Bill mentioned, with NeoGov on some payroll and HR software. Spring is a busy time in finance and that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Thank you, Jill. Let's see here. City Attorney Nikki Thompson.
Well, as John indicated, we've had a lot of really interesting and complicated land use questions lately. And so I've spent a lot of time working with John lately. Also worked quite a bit with Public Works as of late. So it's been busy, which is great. I really enjoy working with your talented staff. So nothing else to add.
Well, would you be comfortable if I shared the information that you received today?
Sure.
Okay, so as of today, Nikki Thompson made partner with, within Graffstra. So congratulations, Nikki. It's well deserved and they're very fortunate to have you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that and I look forward to a very long working relationship with the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki. And moving on to City Supervisor Doug Merriman.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I have a few things going on right now. The first of which is we're getting close to wrapping up the library, finally. It seems like the project that never finishes, that we are in the final stages of commissioning. Just making sure the doors close and the windows open and even down to which way the sprinklers are spraying in the flower beds. So we're down to the small stuff, but we've got to get it all done. So we're getting pretty close. I haven't been given an actual opening day yet. I know there are some plans in the works for that. But we're just still watching the budget, making sure we're coming out fine where I would probably target about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars under budget on the project right now. As soon as I say that, I'm going to jinx myself, but I think we'll come out fine on that. Other things that are going on, yesterday, went over to Mount Vernon and met with staff at Guardian Escrow. We opened up an escrow account and have the documents starting now. We opened up an escrow account and have the documents starting now to close on the property on Reed Street next to the park. And this is one council had asked about a few months ago. We'll be looking at closing. It could be either very quickly this next week or it could be maybe three or four weeks from now because the owners are heading out of town and we'll need them here to sign documents. So either way, it's in process and we've got everything signed. They accepted the city's offer and we're moving forward on that purchase. Other things going on, when you hear other department heads talking about how busy it is, they aren't kidding. Right now, there are a lot of developments going into play and you know, I think we were adding up maybe around 250 units of applications coming in right now. That's a very busy time. So you'll be hearing a lot more probably from John and Mark and Nikki and myself. We've all been spending a lot of time this last couple of weeks, planning those things out. And my hat's off to everybody. It's a great team to work with on these things, but it's going to have us hopping for a while. One other thing we have going, we did get word today from Congressman Larson's office about a grant application we put in. Mayor Johnson had asked me to apply for a community project funding grant. This is an earmark program at the federal government. And I put in for a $500,000 grant for Olmstead Park. And we found out today that Rick Larson had looked at that application, approved it, and he has forwarded on to the House Appropriations Committee. So we've got a ways to go yet, but that's the first major hurdle is getting it back into DC so we can actually run a good chance at getting that grant. Mark did mention the Public Works Building and he's looking at the costs in that and getting a handle on that piece that at the same time, I'm working with the local program down at the State Treasurers Office. And the local program is one run by the Treasurers to assist cities in developing and building buildings and also purchasing equipment. And where it costs us quite a bit of money and bond issue cost to finance something like that. What you can do in the local program is they will combine a number of cities altogether into one bond issue. And then you split the bond issue cost. So it ends up saving us some money on issue costs. And at the same time, hopefully get a good competitive rate that way as well. So there are lots of other fun things going on with the city right now, but those are the main ones. And we'll look forward to coming back forward with more on the library information probably in the next week or two. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Moving on to council reports, I'll begin with Councilwoman Joelle and Kesty.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
The program that you suggested for the yard waste has been fairly successful. So thank you for putting that before the council and making that happen, Joelle. Councilwoman Sarah Diamond.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Chuck Owen. I'm Chuck. You're on mute. Chuck, you're on mute.
I've been muted all my life. Is Mark still around?
He is.
Oh, okay. I had a question for him. I was going to ask him when he was on, but I was muted. So. Mark, if you or one of your sidekicks could come by my house and see me one day. I've got a few things I'd like to go over with him on my street. It's beginning to deteriorate somewhat and there's more and more semis coming up this little street. And maybe they could put a load limit sign up or something. I don't know what we can do about it, but I don't want to see this street go to pot because it's probably one of the nicer streets in town, blacktop. So if you could do that for me, my friend, I would be very appreciative.
Is that it, Chuck?
There he is. Did you hear me, Mark?
I did. Yes. I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Councilman Kevin Loy.
Yeah, I got kind of an observation. You know, I've been in been involved with parks for 20 years. And I also got started, you know, we had the Cedar Woolly Skateboard Competition for five years. And I've I've noticed over the years that that skate park is busy 12 months a year. And you know, it might even be the might be the single park with the most users for during the year. But I just kind of wanted to say that that was, you know, Doug Wood led the charge on building that park. And I was not a real supporter until it got built. And I think they made a great, great thing there. But we also need to get that skate competition going. Again, we were starting to get famous in Western Washington. Groups were starting to come from Seattle for the competition and they had a circuit they'd go, they'd go to Port Angeles and different, there are six or eight cities they go to. And they were just adding Cedar Woolly. And their comment back then was that Cedar Woolly was the best one in the state. So we need to get that started again, maybe next year. I wouldn't mess with COVID this year, but it was starting to build a name for the city. So that's something to keep in your bonnet.
And that is something that actually you mentioned and I put it on the the agenda for the retreat. So we can have some discussion on that. That would be great. Just so you know, it's interesting that you bring it up. Kathy Enns, E-N-N-S, with SkagitTalk.com contacted me. She wanted to get ahold of Doug Woods and the Rotary because she is doing a article, a story actually, on the skate park. So I think that that is going to be fun. She'll let us know when she's airing it. And when she does, I'll push it out to the council so that you can listen to it as well.
Mayor, if I may say something about the skate park, just so the council's aware and actually looking for some, maybe some guidance or some suggestions. We are having increasing problems with vandalism there. It is being well used and it's great to see the kids out there doing that. But we have an element that is trashing the place daily. And our crew starts the day every day picking up trash inside of the bowl and on the fringes and all over the park area. And last week, they tore the doors off the restroom stalls in there. It's just one ton damage. And and I I've been thinking about it, how we can get the word out to the kids that this is their facility. And it just doesn't make any sense for them to soil their own nest. But that's basically what's happening. And and they're expecting our employees to pick up after them. And that just, you know, it's a little a little galling, I will say, in light of what the city is providing to the kids. So if you have any suggestions on how we might be able to reach out to them, they're not, you know, there's no organization. But I would think that some peer peer discussions might be in order. If you have some other ideas, we're open to them.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Councilman Glenn Allen.
Yes, Madam Mayor, shock of shocks, nothing to add tonight.
Thank you, Glenn. Councilman Brendan McLaughlin.
Hi, thank you. I just had a quick question for Mark regarding the BSNF project. Are we expecting there to be any sound impacts for the local residents regarding the pile driving?
Honestly, I don't know. It depends on the type of pile driver they use. If they're using a hammer drop, it's going to be fairly loud. I'm glad you mentioned that. I'm not sure what we can do to warn folks, to be honest with you. It's it's up in the air quite a way, so I imagine the sound's going to carry pretty good. I'll actually talk to them about that. And if we need to get a notice out, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brendan. Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Hi, thank you. A few things. The Washington National Guard will be pulling up stakes out of the food bank and they've been here for almost a year. And at the end of the month, we have Memorial Day. So I thought I would bring it before the council. What do you say we have a parade as to honor the Washington National Guard for the services that they provided to our community? And I know we have COVID, but we have a can-do spirit here in Cedar Woolly. And I just wanted to plant that seed that, let's see if we can get a honor parade for the Washington National Guard and the service they've done, not only for Cedar Woolly, but from the county as well. Also, just wanted to thank Public Works and also the Police Department with making it safe on state and township when those trees were being removed over the past several days. It was good that those were taken down in a safe manner that were damaged in the latest windstorm. And I got a note from a volunteer at the museum that they are seeking more volunteers at Cedar Woolly Museum. So if you want to help promote that, that they're seeking more volunteers there. And then on our summit on May 7th, that was brought up a couple of months ago, where I said I was not able to attend, I'm looking at our City Council Governance Handbook, C7, Under Meeting Rules and Procedures, and Council Member Meeting Participation by Telephone or Video Conference. So I'd be looking to participate in the summit by telephone or video conference. I know it's a in-person, but this is part of our governance handbook and I would like to be able to participate. So that would take a motion. That's what I have, Mayor.
All right. I have to say, first off, I think that the parade is a wonderful idea. But if we move into phase two, I don't know that that's even going to be possible. So let's keep that in mind. Yeah, right. Yeah. So and you are looking for a motion? Is that what you're looking for? For you to participate via?
Via technology, the provision in C7 of the City Council Governance Book, which is meeting participation by telephone or video conference. And I think I could make that motion. So I would move that I could participate in the May 7th summit with by telephone or video conference.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, Councilman McLaughlin, I'll second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign? Okay, that was that was a little confusing. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right. All right. So I think Bill will be able to get you set up regarding that. Yay. Okay. And then let's see, that is it. I have only a couple of things. First off, as you probably recall, we did set aside, you actually passed this, a resolutions providing utility assistance grants for households for the PUD, for those who have PUD utilities who have suffered financial hardship due to COVID. We did set aside up to $5,000 and we have heard from Brian Hinshaw, he's the Finance Manager of PUD. And he said he wanted us to know that they have contacted around 35 eligible accounts for assistance and have completed four certifications. So they said that we have applied, applied the 800 to their account. So good things are happening because of you and because of the certain money that came in. So thank you, council, for your generosity and helping out those who otherwise may find it extremely hard to get caught up on their on their bill. And I want to extend my thanks to Doug. As he mentioned, I did ask him to apply for the Community Project Grant for Olmstead Park. It came across my desk and in looking at it, I knew that there was a ton of paperwork and information that needed to be applied. And I took it to Doug and I said, I know you're already overwhelmed, but would you take this on? And he did. He took it on and it was a very lengthy application, but I thank Doug for doing that. And it's really exciting to hear that we've crossed that first hurdle and let's hope for the best. Let's hope that we have some funds coming our way. As we've talked about earlier, it's the council retreat is May 7th. It is a Friday. It's from 3:00 to 7:00 and we will have dinner for you. I'm actually going to be ordering from Jimmy John's, so I'll be in touch later as far as getting your order. And we will be discussing many things. I want to thank the council who has submitted ideas and interests and concerns. I have them on the agenda and we're pretty much good to go. A reminder that the next council meeting is actually a work session and that is May 5th. So it's two days before the 7th. On May 5th, the directors and supervisors will be presenting their budget, their 2022 budget and projects. So they, some of them will have handout of paperwork for you, which you will find online. They're going to give that to Bill and Bill will post it online so that you will have that and so that you can follow along. So that'll be next Wednesday, May 5th at our work session. And then two days later, from 3:00 to 7:00, we'll be having the council retreat. All right. So and then I know a couple of the directors talked about that they had, I think maybe John and Mark both said that they will have information that they'll be presenting at the next council meeting. And that will actually be, that information will come to you May 12th. So we'll be looking at that in a couple of weeks, just to kind of clarify that. It was an interesting call today with the Health Department. The chief gave you an excellent report as to what is going on. Something that I found fascinating is that they have had $3.4 million come in for PPP or PPE that they have purchased and distributed. That is a lot of money and a lot of PPE, which is personal protection equipment that is being provided. So you know, doing everything, the county is doing everything that they can. The state is doing everything that they can to help keep both our first responders and and those who take care of us safe. So I thought that that was interesting. Other than that, I just want to remind everybody that the farmer's market will begin Wednesday, May 19th, and it'll run through October. So it'll be at Hammer Heritage Square. And so that's just a couple of weeks away as well. All right. So that is all I have. I will now open it up for public comment. It is 6:47. If anybody is online who would like to make public comment, please state your name and your address and keep it no longer than three minutes. So I will open that up. Is there anybody online for public comment? Okay, hearing none. And so Doug, I'm going to check in with you. We didn't have much chance to connect today. Was there any comment that came in for public comment?
No, I didn't receive any requests for a public comment.
All right. Thank you. All right. It is 6:48 and I am going to close public comment. And we'll move on to unfinished business, which is actually the discussion of the protection of the Skagit Headwaters. It's a resolution number 1067-21. And I have the resolution attached along with a letter that I have submitted. And what I am looking for is any feedback and then approval so that we can get that going. I do want to state that in the, I was on vacation all last week, so I didn't have a chance to really look over the the agenda sheet for this. But the focus of this discussion is to consider both the letter and the resolution. And the letter is written to the BC Southwest Mines Division with copy sent to our local representatives in the 39th and 40th District, as well as the Department of Ecology and the Office of the Governor, Jay Inslee, and other Senate and Congressional members, which Richard Brock Smith has sent. So.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution number 1067-21.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a second? I second. Councilwoman. Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Oh, yes. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. As the Skagit River touches Ward 6, this is imperative to express our jewel of a river that needs to be kept clean and. Jewel of a river that needs to be kept clean and I applaud all the efforts. All the background efforts and all the conversations that have happened to make, make it get to this point, thank you very much.
I think it's important as well, of course, the Skagit River impacts our entire community, this entire city and. It's, it's. It would be tragic if something happened, so any other comments, thank you, Councilman DeYoung. All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, any opposed, signify, same sign? Okay, I'm going to assume motion carried even though I only heard a couple of people. And having finished that, there is nothing else on our agenda, can you believe this, it is six fifty one, we're going to be out of here before seven o'clock. So thank you, Council, for making it an expedient and yet very informative council meeting and I will. See you again next Wednesday at six PM, all right, we are adjourned, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.